City has determined is not practical or prudent to conduct an in-person city council meeting due to the local state of emergency and social distancing guidelines. Accordingly, city council will participate in this meeting, the electronic meeting, and the city council meeting will be conducted under Minnesota Statute Section 13D point 021 at the date and time stated above. To the extent practical, members of the public may attend the meeting using the Zoom link. So with that, let's call the meeting to order. And let's rise for the pledge of allegiance. If anyone has a flag that they can...
There we go.
Alright. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Good luck.
The United States of America into republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any changes to the agenda?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, no changes at all.
Alright, any motions to adopt?
Motion to adopt agenda.
Motion by Timon, second by Berg. Amanda, you want to vote first?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well. Agenda is adopted, so we have no presentations, excuse me, we have no presentations, proclamations, or acknowledgements. So next is public comment. Is there, I think I saw Tom Wolf on. Is, Tommy, you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Are you?
I'm doing fine about you.
Good, thank you. Thanks for joining us.
Hey, yeah, you're welcome. Great. I got a number of things here. I don't think I've been on, I've been in, but I had to leave the last couple of meetings early, but I have a few things here. So everyone knows the roundabout is done.
What?
Well, it's basically completed. Yeah. A few other things to do yet, but basically it's functioning, and I drove on it, and boy, that's a nice circle, so.
We know our circles in Scott County.
So then connecting to that, we have, the CDA has 240,000 in their budget to, you know, do the utilities and stuff down that road here at some point. And I talked to Leslie today, and so you, Mr. Mayor, Tom, myself, and our administrator are going to get together and go over some of that, and let's keep this thing rolling, in my opinion, so.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, so great. And then most of our road projects are on track right now. We might try to forward some projects that we need done. We're getting some good bid prices on a lot of stuff, and so we've saved a little bit of money. And right now, some contractors saying they're, you know, ready to do some work, and they can get things done. So we're going to see if that's feasible. We have a helicopter request. Somebody wants to put a helipad in Cedar Lake Township, but it's right close to New Market Township line. And so it's individual residents, and he wants to fly in and out to his work and to his cabin. And so that's going to bring up a little bit of, there's some neighbors that are not happy about that. So anyhow, we're going to see how that goes. But that'll be at the planning commission meeting on the 14th of September coming up. And then we're worried a little bit about the state, you know, as we're trying to open up here more and more. We're worried about how much the state is going to cut us off. They, we think are going to be short about $5 or $6 billion. And things float downhill, and so we're going to, we're probably going to get cut a little bit. And so we're preparing for that. We have had basically a hiring freeze now for about, well, for four or five months now. So we'll see what happens there. And then we're looking at, we approved a preliminary levy of 2.2% increase, and we, we're hoping that's going to be lower, but we just, we wanted to leave a little bit of room in there in case we were going to get cut. And if we do, we can, we'll keep that. If not, we'll lower it down to the one point, something high ones or whatever in that area. So that's all I have tonight. So we'll, I'll have Tracy try to get ahold of you and Tom and see if we can't find a date that we can get together and discuss that CDA project, so.
That sounds great. Appreciate your support on that.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on, anyone else would like to speak under public comment? Gene, I see your hands up.
Well, I did it virtually too. Do you hear me?
I was, I can hear you loud and clear, Gene.
Okay. Well, you know, I attended a few meetings lately, and I guess I wouldn't have done it if they weren't virtual. But anyway, enough said. I just, I just want to make a statement that there's a culture in town, and I support changing that culture. And that culture is people think they're entitled to do whatever they want, and basically disregard for all the laws. And I don't think that's right. That's all I want to say. But I do, I do support changing that culture. And I guess my spirit was broken, but by attending these meetings and hearing different things, it's helped me out.
You see your spirit is broken. Can I ask what you have to?
You see a lot of things going on that should be, but I do, I do hear you trying to be a little more proactive on enforcement and trying to change, change a few things. So that helps.
Well, hey.
I mean, laws are for everybody, so everybody should obey. And I know the police can't be all over, but, you know, just last night, I seen a golf cart after 8:30, which is pretty, pretty dark, driving with no lights on. That's totally stupid.
Yeah.
And I'm sure he realized, he shouldn't be out there. He's not a dumb person. It's kind of what they get away with.
Right. Well, yeah, you're right. I mean, can't be, can't be everywhere. I know they do their best, but yeah, and I certainly appreciate your thoughts on it, Gene. You know, you've been really active in the past with, with helping us out and looking at different, looking at different items. So I appreciate your thoughts and your feedbacks always.
Well, I see a lot of bad things going on, and it hurts me. It disappoints me. It shouldn't be that way.
Alright. I appreciate it, Gene.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on that wishes to speak under public comment? Not seen any more hands up or anything from anybody, so we'll go ahead and close public comments. Move on to consent agenda. Only a couple of things on there. Any, any changes?
No, no changes at all, Mayor.
Any, anyone have any items they want to poll or discuss further?
Motion to approve.
It's a motion by, it's a second by, was that Amanda?
Yes.
Alright, we have a motion, we have a second. Want to vote first?
I didn't hear who you said. Did you say me?
I said Kate, sorry.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you either. Aye.
Uh, Dawn?
Dawn? Yes, sorry.
Alright, that's alright.
Hi.
Josh?
Alright, you were looking right up at me. I mean, it was perfect when you looked up. I mean, I'm on my video, you're right square.
Was that a yes vote, Josh?
Yes, aye.
I'm right above you on mine, so if you could look straight up.
I'll try and keep that in mind. Amanda?
Aye.
Kate, we got you, Kate. Alright, I'll vote aye as well. So consent agenda passes. We have no public hearings tonight, so on to general business.
Mayor, members of the council, you've got Tom's memo there for the CARES Act funding, or emergency relief funds, IRF, as we like to call it, I guess. I just want to walk through a little bit on the numbers here, just so you know what we're talking about. Non-payeral operating expenses again are those expenses for sanitizing, supply signage, social distancing materials and equipment. This is a little hard to check, but right around $40,000. Eligible payroll expenses, $50,000. Frankly, it might be a little low. Let me give an example there for you. The expenses are salaries and benefits associated with department heads, supervisors, people like myself that spend a lot of time on this cholera virus policy issues, figuring out how we spend the money and that kind of thing. So, for example, about 30% of my time has been shifted from parks and rec to doing COVID-19 related things. And so we can reimburse ourselves for that time, which at this point is somewhere around $6,700 in the last three and a half months. Brady, Linda, everybody here has some time as part of that, okay? So the idea here is, is that, that I'm doing COVID-19 when I could be doing parks and rec, and therefore, the way we read the rules is that the city can be reimbursed from that. We can take it out of the $359,000 that we've already received for it. Payroll expenses, you know, that's, that's a tough one. As Tom mentioned in his memo there, we could actually spend the entire $359 and more on reimbursing for public safety expenses on a lump sum basis. Tom and I both think that we're not certain that we've got really a clear ruling that says we can do that. A lot of cities are doing it, but we've decided to take the conservative approach so far and use the eligible, break down the eligible payroll expenses. So Kelly's put together a timesheet that we're all filling out, detailing our hours and the purpose there for audit purposes. The police department office HVAC system there as well is another thing that we need more clarification on, actually, as to whether we can do that or not. Since in the old police department, the HVAC system, they'll be out of there before they can even use the HVAC system. So it's not clear whether we can do that one or not, but we've got it on the list anyway. The police department garage HVAC is about 62.5, and that would be used for the getting it winterized, so to speak, and puts some air conditioning in so that the food shelf could move out of the Warrick Park shelter into that space, as we talked about, I think, at the last meeting, something we might do. Touch-free bathrooms, about 62. That really incorporates a lot of different things for us as, as well too. And frankly, you know, it makes it a lot safer, both for citizens visiting, council, and staff if we do that. And frankly, this one will have benefits down the road as, as well too. And then we have Bridges Hospital, and also Northfield. As you know, hospitals can request some funds from our part of the $359,000 as well too, if we want to designate that to them. And then we have Business Economic Assistance. Tom has suggested about $100,000 to business grants for that, and Renee will take you through all that. And then there's a resolution at the end if we want to go that direction. So that's just a little bit of background on what we've been through and trying to determine what we can and cannot do. It seems to change about every week, and not so much from the feds, but from the state. But so we're trying to be as conservative as we can. We go with stuff that we know can get funded so that we don't run into a situation down the, down at the end where we've got leftover funds that we could have used for something else. So Renee, if you're ready, I think, Mayor, if you'd like, we can finish with Renee's discussion of the Business Economic Assistance Program, and then we can get into some discussion and hopefully some thoughts on prioritization as well too.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Yep.
As many of the council may have heard and know that our CARES Act funding allocation can be used to provide grants or loans to businesses. And we have done a fair amount of research on the, just the League of Minnesota City Guidance, the criteria under the federal CARES Act, and the state recommendations. And we reviewed the programs of 14 other communities that have already adopted similar programs, and we've basically come up with some recommendations for you, should you choose to go that route. But we also thought it was important for you to have kind of a good understanding of the number of businesses that we have in the community currently. So we currently have 34 brick and mortar businesses inside of the city limits. A list of those businesses was provided in your packet. We also have 12 licensed daycare facilities inside the city limits. And then we have an unknown number of home-based businesses. And one of the reasons the number is, is really unknown, we do have some business list resources that are provided from various organizations. However, we don't know which of those businesses may have incorporated or filed their original Secretary of State documents, using their home address, but they're actually operating from another location. So it is, and, and then we don't know if some of those people may have moved in the meantime. And so we just really don't have any confidence in the accuracy of the home-based business list that we do have. So moving on again, after researching some other communities, this is, I drafted in your packet, a small business emergency grant program guidelines. Most of the communities that have adopted these programs are, there's not a lot to them. They're pretty easy to understand, comprehend, apply for, and the purpose is to make it fairly simple to get these funds in the hands of businesses. So this is just some ideas that I've come up with for your consideration. The draft program suggests up to $5,000 grants to local businesses. Again, the businesses would need to be locally owned, for-profit businesses with a brick and mortar location inside the city limits, and also does include daycare facilities, in-home, in-home daycares. The businesses need to be in good standing with the state and up to date on property taxes. As is currently drafted, have less than 100 employees and less than $1 million in revenue. I don't know that there's a really good reason for those two things. It was very common in the other cities to have some kind of cap. Eligible expenses are things such as mortgage, rent, utilities, payments to suppliers, costs associating with, associated with reopening or adapting to COVID guidelines, PPE, and basically anything that's non-payroll expenses. There are some other programs that were offered through other avenues that allowed payroll reimbursements, and we just decided, I think it's my recommendation, that payroll expenses not be included in this program. And then that there's a demonstrated loss of revenue since March 1st, 2020. So this, again, this is all up for discussion, looking for your feedback. The mayor had suggested possibly, you know, just discussing some other ideas as well. And these are some of the ideas that I think I'll turn it over to Joe at this time. These are some things that you suggested. Joe?
Yeah. So I, you know, I had a conversation with Tom, yeah, I think it was yesterday. And I wanted to kind of get a feel for what, you know, a big chunk, well, yeah, a reasonable chunk of our funds are going to reimburse the city for expenses. And I wanted to get a feel for how that was going to impact the general fund. And I got the impression from Tom that, you know, even if we didn't get reimbursed for those expenses, that we would get, that it really wouldn't have any impact on the general fund, which kind of creates a little bit of an opportunity. And I really wanted to invest as much as we could into businesses and not, I guess, try and make it as easy as possible. So I put together, you know, kind of some ideas as to what I wanted to, what I wanted us to consider. So we do have some businesses that are in the township, that are technically located in the township, that are really kind of Elko New Market businesses. And I'm kind of thinking of something like those Newton Circle businesses as an example. So I wanted to try and find a way to open this up to some of them, because I think they're kind of, there's really not a township, or there's, the township, I don't believe, is having any grants. Counties are, but they're kind of left in this kind of gray area. So I wanted to float the idea of, of maybe making them, or giving some eligibility to town, to businesses that are located in the township, if the, if ownership also lives within the city. There's, I know there's a few businesses in the Newton Circle area that would kind of meet that threshold. So anyway, I wanted to put that out there. Couple other things. I don't want to make it, I don't want to make it any more complicated than it has to be. I think there's, I think it's reasonable to assume that any, just about anyone that's going to take the time to apply for this grant, and given kind of where we at, where we have been with COVID over the last several months, there are some businesses that are really doing well, but there are a lot that are, that are hurting. And especially when you add in the roundabout construction as well, it's certainly not helping a lot of our businesses as well. So I wanted to almost just do automatic grants for a certain, for maybe up to a certain dollar amount. And I threw out the example of maybe 4,000 being automatic. And then they could apply for reimbursement of expenses, for COVID-related expenses. So if, if a restaurant had to put in a sneeze guard, or stuff like that, if you had to, if you had to pay for extra expenses, that would be something that, you know, you can supply, like receipts or whatever tracking you have, and those could be eligible expenses. So you could actually have an increased amount over that 4,000 up to 5,500. I would like to eliminate the revenue piece. That's kind of, I've, I've seen a number of other cities and municipalities have that. That always kind of irks me a little bit, because if you make over $1 million, that doesn't mean your business isn't hurting due to COVID. There might be a perception that you could have, maybe you have access to more resources. I just, from the banking side of me, that's not really the case. If you're a business, if you're doing $1.5 million, but you're really struggling, banks are, banks aren't going to, they want to lend you the money. So I don't know. I, that's always bugged me, and I don't think we have a ton of businesses that do over $1 million in town. So I wanted to look at eliminating that as well. I think Renee already touched on, or at least it was touched on in the memo, the local, the local ownership. Obviously, you know, as much as we're excited to have QuickTrip coming to town, I don't know that they're exactly the type of business that we would want to be giving out grants to. Just, they are a much, much larger company. I said, I don't know that there's a lot that would even qualify within our city. And then I think the last point on here is revisit non-funded recommendations in mid-October. And I guess my thought, thought there is, I think as this was proposed, and there's nothing magical, magical about mid-October, but as it was proposed in the memo from staff, it would run through, I think, September 30th. And, you know, if we were to go this round, if we were to put $100,000, excuse me, if we were to put $100,000 for small business grants, if we were to not include, if we're not going to reimburse ourselves, and then of course, of course, also assuming we would not be donating anything to Fairview, we can look and see what we have left over mid-October or early October, doesn't really matter. And maybe we can look at allocating some of those funds to those places at that time. So if I understand correctly, it was mid-November where we have to basically get the money back if we don't spend it. So I don't know. I want to try and get as much done as we possibly can. I think that touch-free bathrooms is probably a really good idea. I mean, COVID or dying COVID, this is an opportunity to fund that and do that. My biggest priority is getting, trying to get money out to small businesses that are really hurting. I think as a city, we can absorb the expenses that we've used, that we would be eligible for. And obviously, we talked at our last meeting a lot about the, the old PD HVAC, so that's, I mean, that's obviously something I think we want to do as well. So those were kind of my ideas. You can, feel free to tell me I'm an idiot. I'm sure Josh is on here and will, but.
I already unmuted.
No.
You're kidding.
Uh, that's, 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 I'm at, and love to hear feedback.
Mr. Mayor, you could just add a couple of things really quick, so the rest of the council knows. As far as eliminating the revenue cap, I think that we probably have four brick and mortar businesses in town that may fit in, may be eliminated if, if we keep that in place. So just so you understand the numbers, it's probably just fine to eliminate it. And there is another program, grant program that has been available from the Scott County CDA. And Scott County has also re-out, recently allocated quite a significant amount of their CARES Act funding to businesses. So businesses in the township can apply for grants through the Scott County CDA. They're being administered by Scott County. I do know that two of our local businesses received, I believe, $5,000 grants through their program, through the initial CDA program, which initially their program had 100,000. Now I think they're, they're allocating like well over $1 million to additional business funding. Just so everybody understands that township businesses do have opportunity, and a very similar opportunity to county grants. And that's all that I have.
Thanks, Renee. Alright, Josh.
Amanda, you're unmuted, so you go ahead.
I was curious if anyone had attended the League of Minnesota Cities, I guess, informational session they had. I don't even know what to do. It was on, it was yesterday. If there were any changes that had been, that, I guess, additional information that they provided that we could, I got a little toddler with me now.
Can you please go downstairs?
That they provided, if they provided any information on changes, and, and also if, I saw that there's another League of Minnesota Cities item that's on the second that's kind of talking about what other cities are doing. For me, one thing that I'm kind of, I don't know, is the HVAC for the old PD, the non-food shelf side of things, I feel like that might be somewhat high of a risk if it's not something that's covered by the, by the funding.
Well, to point to that, it's split into two. It's about 107 for the police and 62, somewhere in that area, for the food shelf there as well. My personal feeling is that things have changed a little bit in terms of what's allowable and what's not. And with our police department, not really, the idea is it's supposed to be current, okay? So for example, the touch-free bathroom, such, if we get that done, it solves the current problem of reducing the opportunity to get COVID-19. We could probably make that argument pretty easily for the food shelf, because in a sense, that's where they are now, is a city building, and what we're doing is moving them to the garage upgrading facility so that they can use it, and then out of there. Of course, the police are leaving, and so by the time we get the HVAC done there, you could make the argument that they really didn't benefit from it at all in terms of reducing the opportunity for COVID-19 in that respect. So I think we're on pretty good ground with the PD garage HVAC, and, but all of these things, we want to check and make sure that they're correct by talking to people at the league and the metro cities to make sure, and the state to make sure that we've got that down correct. But yeah, I would agree with you. I mean, we're not, we won't be moving anything into that police department building. We'll be getting rid of all of the mold and billdo and everything else that's in there, so we can at least breathe in there safely. So you could make the argument that you have, that it really isn't solving a current COVID-19 problem. The police department will be moving into a brand spanking new addition, and addition and have a top-notch HVAC system in there. That's people approved. I don't know if that helps, but that, that's kind of the assessment of the situation there.
Anything else you wanted to add, Amanda?
Not yet.
I guess, Joe, I got a question for you. I mean, so are you suggesting that we stay at the hundred thousand for the business grants? Or are you looking to increase the, the percentage of the funding that's available? Or just change the criteria?
I would look to, I would look at a hundred thousand now, like the county did. We could look at adding more. I I think we can hold off necessarily on reimburse on any. Oh, you know what? I got the wrong spreadsheet in front of me. Sorry. Yeah, okay. But yeah, the payroll expenses, I think we can kind of, we can wait on reimbursing ourselves with that until, you know, we kind of see how this program is working. But I I didn't have a magic number in mind.
Yeah, no, I agree. That ninety thousand doesn't have to be allocated or whatever used right away. And it's like the fifty and forty. I mean, I I agree with you, Amanda, on the the HVAC for the PD one. I mean, whether or not it's a risk or not, I think it looks like crap. I think it looks like us as a city taking advantage of an opportunity to fix something up for future use. So whether or not we would ever actually have to give the money back, I mean, I think that's one thing, but I think perception of it looks kind of whatever, like we're taking advantage of the situation. So I guess I would highly suggest not doing that one. All the other ones you could easily make the argument for, I mean, I'm not worried about the police, police department payroll stuff either. I mean, I I think we can pick a number, do whatever we want there, you know, kind of in my head, thinking do the forty and the fifty, so that puts us at ninety, do the PD Garage HVAC, that's at one fifty-two, then throw in a hundred thousand for the grants and then you have whatever is left over there to kind of play around with. You know, I'd be open to increasing the amount for business grants or or whatever to for sure. You know, I I guess my question would be to some of our businesses, would five thousand be impactful? I mean, of course, five thousand is going to help. But could we even increase the up to ten thousand, see what applications we get? And we can always, you know, if we get twenty of them and we only have a hundred thousand to spend, we can still do five thousand for one and and cap them at five thousand. But do we want to allow for more if there's good justification for? And maybe we only get eight or nine applications and you know, then we can really help out some of these businesses. To some of the, the potential changes or whatever. The, the one that scares me is with the automatic piece of it. I mean, I think as long as we don't make it a seventeen-page application, turn in all these pieces of documentation, I think there should be some sort of vetting just to make sure. I think that is a, a cover-your-butt type of thing for the city down the road to make sure that we were actually dishing out these funds appropriately. Not saying that any business would take advantage, but I think it'd be one way for us to cover our own rears on that one. Totally open to increasing the income or the total revenue thing. I, I, that doesn't bother me at all. And, you know, as far as the New Market Township, I mean, I think that's a great point. I mean, especially, I mean, anything along the two corridor, I mean, should be fair game. And I I'd be totally open to that.
Don, you're unmuted.
Yeah, I have a thought. So the hundred and seven that we have in there for the PD Office HVAC, since we are like literally in construction for the new PD Office, is there any upgrades or anything that we could potentially add to use that?
Well, again, it has, the, the problem is it has to be current in terms of the upgrades. So we're in the situation where the police aren't going to occupy that until either after or just right at that, that particular point in time. And the other, the other thing is, is in looking at, I think, you know, the, the design of the HVAC system we have there is, is good. We looked a little bit at the city's HVAC system as well, too, to make sure that it was up to grade as well, too. And I think we've seemed to be in good shape there as well, too. So. Again, it's hard to make the argument if you're already got something that's, you know, ninety-five out of a hundred percent good, then, you know, upgrade it.
I was just thinking, I don't.
That's a good, it's a good thought.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking even, even aside from HVAC, is there anything else that we can on the new PD, even though they're not going to be occupying it?
Tom Brady here, can I say something?
Yeah.
So we did use some of those funds for an upgrade to the PD. We actually added a COVID mitigation station.
Oh, I forgot about that. Thanks.
Oh, okay.
One of the, one of the things that was cut out of the PD due to expenses when we designed was a washer and dryer and a hand washing stand in the garage before you enter into the PD.
Okay.
Once I saw this come out, it was very critical. I mean, we only had two weeks to act before it could actually be put into the new PD. But we were able to design and build a COVID mitigation station in the garage that added a washer and dryer. So if we were exposed, we could wash our uniforms and wash our hands before entering into the PD and exposing other people. So some of that money has gone into that. We've also, there's some other expenses. We're applying it for to add to computers. So officers wouldn't have to share and then lessen the risk to the officers for spreading it. So we created the new PD or are going to ask for those funds from that. That's, that's in that non-payroll operating expenses, I believe, for that. We did try to apply it to what can we do to keep the police officers safer as well.
Right, okay.
I mean, and Mayor, I don't know how you want to proceed, but I have Tom sitting here on my shoulder, which is a scary thought, feeling, whatever. But I'm thinking, you know, do we want to, you know, even go through the list, scratch off the things and then see what we're left with and what to play around with at all or?
Yeah, I mean, we, we certainly can. I think we maybe look at this from a priority standpoint. I, at least that's kind of how I approached it. You know, we, we have a number of things kind of listed out here. Sorry, the screen keeps changing.
Sorry, I was.
Oh, you're fine.
Excel spreadsheet that, but.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't know. I think maybe that's the best way to approach it when we're looking at allocating. Unless anyone else has other ideas.
Well, let me just throw a couple of other things in there, too, Mayor, if I could. You know, in terms of strategy here, you don't have to spend it all right now. So. If you look at the Business Economic Assistant, you're at a hundred, you do the touch-free bathrooms and the HVAC, that gives you somewhere around two twenty-five. And then you've got the ninety for the eligible operating and payroll expenses. You're at three fifteen out of three fifteen for fifty-nine right now. If it turns out to in mid-October, as you've kind of suggested, taking another look at it and seeing where, where we lie in it and we've got a program and we've already spent the other hundred, we still have some contingency here to, to catch up on. I think that to me is a, is a good strategy. Whatever we don't use, if it turns out that we can use it on police department payroll, you know, not four hundred and three, but let's say we have fifteen, twenty thousand and the state came out with an edict a little bit later that said, no, you're right, you can spend it on police payroll and you don't have to itemize it, for example. So. You know, that, that's one week that you could do it based on what I'm hearing people say. So. Anyway, the thought is we don't need to do it all now. If we can eliminate things like the HVAC and in general, the payroll idea for the, at this point, then we're somewhere around three fifteen there, what I can see.
Does, let me ask this, is anyone, does anyone oppose to the business grants?
Not at all. I think we could go higher to your point.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Is anyone opposed to the touch-free bathrooms?
No.
Okay. So those two, so those two things, we can almost just kind of, we can just count on. I mean, the business assistance, we can, we can talk about the dollar amounts a little bit more, but I, I would think those two things are probably, at least my opinion, and tell me if anyone disagrees, those two things would be, to me, the biggest priority. The, how about the PD Garage HVAC? Anyone opposed to that?
No.
So, okay, so we have a few things right there already identified that we, that we're for proceeding forward on. I don't know that, as kind of as Mark had suggested, I don't know that we have to make a hard decision on the rest of the things right now, unless I'm missing something. Okay, is there any point?
Does that include the non-payroll operating expenses for things like what we were doing with the police department and for eligible payroll expenses like my time that I'm spending on parks and rec?
I, that, that wasn't in the, in what I had listed out. I was just looking at those few priorities. So.
Okay.
Chief, you had, you looked like you wanted to say something.
Yes, I, I do think it's wise to wait on some of the payroll and do, I know Tom spoke of this too, and his suggestion is having not spending it all right away. Just one of the things that pop up, a lot of us don't think about is I had an officer that I just had to bench for two weeks because his significant other tested positive. So what that entails is not only do we have to put him on the side and pay his payroll, but we also have to cover a lot of his shifts with overtime. Now, all that is eligible under the grants and that's kind of what they were thinking about. Now, I don't want to, we've been, I'm knocking on wood here. We've been good so far, but if we have one, we also have many of our officers have children that are going to be going back to school. If any of those children test positive, we have to, by our policy, sideline that officer, which does impact our budget to cover those other shifts. So. Just something like that is to think about, to have that fluff, if you will, or to have that little bit of gray area that you can go back to make sure that the city is made whole at the end. I think that some of you mentioned before is really wise and there's no time limit on that until the end of the grant. So. I just wanted to make that point that, and he is the first one we've had to actually pay to keep home. So.
Thanks, Chief. So, okay, so, so we had identified, we had identified the bathrooms, the business grants and the PD or, yeah, the, the Garage HVAC. Are items that we, is there, are there other things that people feel we need to decide on right away, need to allocate funds to right away?
I, I don't think we have to allocate funds to it, but I think that we should decide on the Ridges Hospital one, since they have been repeatedly asking. And I think it's only respectful to say, no, we're not going to, in my opinion. I mean, I, I wouldn't support allocating funds to that request for a variety of reasons. And I think just out of respect, we can give them an answer.
I agree with you, Josh. I do not feel we need to give Ridges Hospital anything. I think we have enough of our own expenses that we can use up the money just fine.
I'll give Ridges credit. I mean, they, me and Tom, we had a conference call with, with a few people from Ridges. And I took it as, I mean, they, they absolutely, I believe that they absolutely need the money, but they kind of. I don't know, I got, I got the impression from the conversation that it was almost, like, it doesn't hurt to ask. We know every municipality is getting something. We know everyone's going to have probably more requests than they have dollars to spend, but we should at least make them aware that hey, we could use some money if you guys are going to give it back. So I, I would, I'm in agreement with you guys. I, I don't know that we need to fund anything right now. We can always just maybe send them a letter and say, no. We could always leave the door open, too, that we're going to reevaluate in, you know, six weeks or so. I don't know.
I agree.
Should we, should we do the same for Northfield, too? Hospital, be the same policy then, right?
My opinion, yes.
Okay.
Did they make a request? Because I, I.
I believe, I, I, I'm not quite sure they made one specifically, but I think there was some interest as well from them. So.
I mean, I, I guess in, in, in my opinion, I mean, I would have a different feel for a Northfield-like hospital compared to a Fairview-like hospital. Just different, different ballgame, different players, different resources. So, I mean, I, I would have a, I, I probably still would say no, but I mean, at least I would be more open considering it.
Yeah, I can, I can find out when Tom gets back whether we've actually had an official letter or not. So.
Okay, so we're, we're in agreement. I mean, the PD Garage HVAC is one thing that's a pretty hard dollar amount. The touch-free bathrooms, that's kind of a dollar, that's a given dollar amount. Where we really have to kind of decide is on the business grants, how much we want to allocate to that, because that is something that we probably need to get up and running quickly. Josh?
Yeah, before we move on, just for clarification, I mean, so, and I agree, the HVAC and the garage and the touch-free bathroom, this should be a go. Did Tom explain it to me right? Or did I read it right? That if we don't get that done, though, and, and invoiced and, and paid out before November fifteenth, we could be on the hook then for, for paying it. So, I mean, do we have any fear or worry or concern that we're not going to be able to get these upgrades done in that short window that we have to think about?
Good question.
Yes, I think there's always a risk that that might happen. I'm not concerned about that. I believe November fifteenth is the date that we have to be, we have to have everything paid out for these particular projects. But as I understand it, they can be done within that timeframe, Josh. I could double-check that as well.
Okay. Let's talk, let's talk how much to allocate for business assistance. Do we want to start at a hundred? Do we want to start at a bigger dollar amount? Amanda, Don?
Well, if we have more to start out at, we should, I think that we should start out. I think that we should start out with what we got. Because if we're going to use it or lose it, I think we should use it.
I, I just want to make sure I'm following. Are you saying we should up it from a hundred or?
I think that we should.
Okay. Kate, I'm guessing you, you're wanting to stay out of this.
This portion of it, yes, I will stay out of.
Amanda, what do you think?
So I'm wondering if we're looking at the number of businesses that we know exist. If we want to start with, you know, like how you talked about a four thousand dollar and then proposed as a five thousand dollar grant. A hundred thousand dollars isn't going to cover that. I'm just looking at numbers.
You're, you're right, it's not going to cover it for every business necessarily.
And so I guess we're assuming that not everybody is going to apply, which is likely true.
Kind of a first come, first approach. I, I just want to get back to something I kind of, I forgot about earlier. Josh, you had mentioned the the kind of opening the Pandora's box, I guess, if you will, and just doing some automatic grants. Reason I bring that up is, I, so I have talked to a number, number of different businesses and I've talked to the chamber and I've just, I've kind of sought out some feedback and feedback I've gotten was, yeah, there, there are a number of different programs out there and a lot of them are very complicated. The, not every, not every business necessarily operates the same with what they have. The, not every, not every business necessarily operates the same with what they have, what they can show as far as demonstrating what their, what their financial need is. Maybe we can, maybe we can look at lowering that amount. I, I don't know. I mean, I kind of just threw out a number there to have a discussion point, but I want to just make it as easy as possible for businesses to be able to get this with as little hassle as possible. The other, other thing, I checked, Amanda, you brought up the question about, is 5,000 even going to make a dent? I think that was you that asked that. And I had the same question. Feedback I got was yes. There are a number of businesses that, hey, you know, if your sales are a thousand dollars a week or something like that, and you haven't had, I mean, anything's going to be helpful. Now, obviously, more money is the more, is more impactful, but we do have a limited amount of funds to spread out, so. Yeah, I, I had the fear that we would, you know, do we give out $5,000 and then have a business use that? And then, you know, end up closing up shop in a month because it really wasn't impactful to them. After getting some feedback on that, I was concerned with that. So, anyway.
Back to your automatic, I mean, so, and maybe it's not as automatic as, you know, it sounds. I mean, there's still going to be an application process, they're still going to have to fill out the paperwork. We're going to, I mean, know who they are, what their business is, that kind of deal. Is there anything from a legal standpoint that we can put in there to say, you know, if down the road, the state was, or whoever were to come to the city and say, hey, we're going to audit you for how you handed out this money, that then we could then require those businesses then to do a more thorough, or provide more information or anything like that? Or is once we hand out that money, it's on us?
I would personally not suggest just giving out $4,000 to every business in town, for instance, without having some legal input. I've created an application form that's extremely simple. You know, your name, address, type of business, and lists your expenses. And then, but the one question, probably the most difficult question, would be, you know, just to demonstrate a loss in revenue, in net revenue during some period since March 1st. I don't, I just, I'm not comfortable with you adapting just to give out $4,000 without some input from our legal.
Well, if we, if we use it for improper things, we'd have to pay it back, yes. So for example, if it turned out that the, we did the police department HVAC system and it turned out to be incorrect, yeah, we're on the hook for that. Has to be used for those three eligibility criteria that Tom listed in there as well, so.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree, Renee. I mean, I think we do need probably a legal opinion on that. I don't know, maybe 2,000 is a, is a better, I don't, I think the dollar amount's probably irrelevant to your point, Renee, but. And the other consideration is the, the demand on city staff for having to, quote, underrate these grants. I don't know, what, I, I'm just cautious about putting them in a position, putting Renee or Haley or whomever's going to be doing it in a position where they have to look at a business and they have to try and make a judgment as to whether they're struggling or not. That kind of puts them in a difficult spot. Now, granted, I've been work, I've been living in paycheck protection program loans for the last several months. So I am very passionate about the automatic forgiveness thing, because I know what an administrative nightmare it can be. I don't think this is going to be, I don't think this would necessarily be on that same scale, but still, we have, you know, a limited amount of people working at city halls, so. I'm open to other suggestions. Or even scrapping the automatic piece altogether, if that's what the rest of the council feels. All right.
We do have legal, James here, if he had.
I'm waiting, wait for him to jump in.
Mayor, members of the council, in order to make the grants, the expenditures have to be necessary due to the public health emergency related to COVID-19. I think the city would want to have some kind of documentation that, in advance, that makes clear that these expenditures are related to the pandemic, and also that the expenditures have been incurred within the relevant time period, which is March 1st, 2020, November 15th. The concern would be is, if the expenditures, if the funds were given out and then they were expended on some non-COVID-19-related expenditure, then they're subject to clawback. That raises potential problems for the city in trying to recover that money.
So we couldn't, we, we couldn't almost consider it like a business stimulus or anything like that? I don't know if that's the right, that's probably not the right term, but if I'm hearing you right, you're saying that's kind of off the table. We really can't do that.
I, yes, I, I would say that it's important that the expenditures follow the three requirements that have been listed in the materials that were provided to the council.
Okay, well, that kills the automatic, the free money idea, so. So that's good. We've advanced that a little bit. Okay. Dollar amounts and grants. I mean, do we want to go with 5,000? Do we want to look at larger dollar amounts?
I don't know. I mean, I, I, I think we still have the flexibility to say, I mean, we're going to spend a hundred thousand. Let's hopefully spend it all. Let's hopefully give it to our businesses. Give us a good proposal. I mean, and maybe cap it, so cap it at 10,000 or 15 or whatever, you name it. If we get 10, 15, 20 applications, heck, all 34 or 32 or whatever it was, then we can decide as a city, do we want to prioritize them? Or do we just want to give everybody equal shares of that hundred thousand? Do we want to increase that a hundred thousand to give them five thousand? I mean, I think, I don't know, instead of, instead of only doing it 5,000 and then we only get 10 people or 10, 10 businesses to apply for it, now we got 50,000 left over. Do we do a second round? Do we allocate it to something else? I don't know. I, I guess I'd be open to up it, and we still have the control because we can put it in there. That's up to whatever the amount is.
Yeah, if there's nothing automatically, you know, if there's no automatic source of funds, then it does change things because they do have to demonstrate the loss of revenue or there has to be some justification as to why they're getting a dollar amount that they're getting, so. I mean, I'm fine going to 7,500, fine going to 10,000. I don't know.
I agree. I agree with you guys.
Renee, any, any thoughts? I mean.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that. I think I maybe suggested the lower limit to more evenly distribute it to 34 businesses, but the 5,000 was on the lower end of the communities that we inventoried. I think there was maybe one or two that was 3,000. And then there were a lot that were more. There was 7,500, there was 10,000. I think Burnsville was the highest at 20,000. Of course, they have a lot more money. I'm, I'm fine raising it, and they're going to have to provide, you know, proof of expenses, so. They can't pay, you know, maybe somebody's not going to submit for the full 5,000 anyways.
How do people feel about, someone else throw a dollar amount. Don, throw a dollar amount?
Say 10,000.
10,000? I'm, I'm fine with that. Because the next question that is, you know, what are our criteria? How do we qualify them for that amount? Amanda, how do you feel about going to 10?
I mean, I'm fine with saying, you know, up to $10,000. I just worry that if, if we say up to 10,000 and then, you know, they submit the paperwork and it's determined that they don't get 10,000, or we have many businesses that apply. Like, is it getting, setting, I don't know, getting people's hopes up for a lot more relief than they may actually get? I mean, I probably shouldn't think that way, but.
Renee, what do you think about that?
Well, my personal opinion is that every single, every business in town is going to apply because we're going to advertise it really well. You know, I'll probably, I have the application form done, I have the letters drafted. It'll be in the mail tomorrow, and I'll probably be stopping at all the businesses like I did a month ago. I think they're all going to apply.
I would say 5,000.
So I guess the answer, I didn't really answer your question, but I guess I'd consider leaving it at 5,000.
Okay.
And I'm totally cool with that. I just wanted to see if there was any appetite to go higher. So 5,000 is fine. If we can get all 30 some to do it, sweet. And then we can use that 44,500 left over, slide it over, and now we can fund pretty much all of them.
I'm fine with 5,000. Joe just threw another number out there, so I did.
Just doing what the mayor asked.
I appreciate that. Okay. How, I, I know Josh weighed in on the township businesses that I had proposed earlier. Does anyone else have concerns or objections?
I don't necessarily have concerns, but if they are getting opportunities through the CDA in the county, do we want to get more information on what they may be already receiving before we include them? Because we likely, with Renee's outreach, will probably, I mean, I think we'll have a lot of success in being able, in getting applications.
Would we, would we have to ask the same of the two or whatever in town that also? Because I mean, it was eligible for city businesses as well. So are we going to cross-reference or audit our, our city ones too then? I mean, and maybe we should. I'm not saying we shouldn't, but then I think it's just, got to have that discussion too.
I think a lot, I mean, businesses that are applying, and some, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's any restrictions to being able to get multiple grants, right?
There's not, the business owner, and there's no way for us to really audit it, but the business owner is, has to basically initial on the application that they're not asking for reimbursement for the same expense in two different programs, so they're not double-dated.
Right.
And we're just, it's basically on your honor, is all we can say. The application materials, say, for instance, that are submitted to Scott County, it's private data. We don't have access to the data. We have access to the business name and the amount that they are awarded, but as far as the breakdown of receipts that they're requested reimbursement for, we don't have access to that. Nor will they have access to ours. The only thing that will be public information is the name of the business and the total amount. So it's kind of on your honor, but it is built into the application that they certify that they aren't asking for reimbursement for more than one program for the same item.
Man, was that kind of the concern you were getting at, or did I go down the wrong path there?
I, I guess, I mean, I'm not opposed to including the township and like the two corridor, like we, like I think Josh brought up. I was just, if, I guess in my head, I wasn't thinking that our, our businesses that are also in Scott County can apply for the grants as well, so, I mean, I think it, I'm not opposed to opening it up.
I mean, you know, I assume that the 32, 34, I should know that number, was all within, again, estimate, best guess, was all within city limits. So I mean, you know, part of me says, if, I mean, if all 34 within the city limit apply, I would want to give it to them first, and then open it up, any remaining stuff to those then in the township that meets that criteria.
I agree. I think at this point in time, we should, and I know this is a council decision, so forgive me for inserting my staff opinion, but I think at this point in time, we should limit it to city businesses if, if we have money left over at the end.
Okay, so, okay, well, maybe, okay, then maybe we start out with city businesses and we revisit this. Because we're already talking about doing it anyway.
A lot of the businesses out there are renters in the buildings. I don't know who they are. It would take some, it wouldn't be that, that hard to find out, but.
Sure.
My two cents is to, to keep it with city businesses at this time.
Okay. Is that Josh, Amanda, Don, I think Kate dropped out. I think she was having some internet issues.
She's back.
She's back, all right.
I'm here. We're going to see how long it lasts.
Okay. City businesses only, Amanda, Josh, Don?
Yes. Yes, yep.
Totally opening it up if we have extra.
Yes.
If we have extra, definitely open it up. I would.
Okay. Removing the $1 million revenue cap. How do people feel about that?
I don't care. I'd be supportive of removing it. I should be more clear. I would be supportive of removing.
Yeah, I think we should remove it.
Okay. Amanda?
I don't have strong feelings either way, so I will support removing it as well.
Very, very political. Good job. Okay. Renee, did we give you kind of enough to get, go, you just delve into more details?
Well, Renee, you were going to ask about childcare?
Yeah. Position on including in-home daycares.
Yes.
Yes?
That's me, but.
I think we should.
Get their license through the state and the county, then yes, definitely include them.
The 12 that I represented are licensed.
Anyone opposed to that?
No. Okay. I don't know that we have anybody over 100 employees, but it takes.
I don't think so either.
We're, we're taking out the $1 million revenue cap. Sounds good. I think I have what I need. I might rename the program to just Business Emergency Grant Program instead of Small Business then, and just amend it as you directed. And we will, I, we would need you to adopt the resolution, which adopts the program. And it's resolution number 20-46. It was drafted by Andrea. And I will get the applications in the mail tomorrow.
Yeah.
I moved.
Second.
Second by, Kate, was that you?
That was me, yes.
Did you, did you want to make a motion on it as a local business owner?
Oh, I suppose I should abstain.
I will second that.
James, what do you think? I should be abstaining from this?
Yeah.
All right. All right, so we have a motion by Berg, a second by Novak. Don, you want to vote first?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Kate, you're abstaining, right?
Abstain, yep.
Now we'll vote aye as well, so that passes.
Okay, so this is a resolution adapting the business grant program for $100,000 to start with. And then I think you would, they'd need a separate motion to allocate funds for the other two items that we discussed.
So just to clarify, that would be, that would be the touch-free bathrooms in HVAC for the, for the old PD garage, correct?
That's correct.
So a motion to allocate funds for the old PD garage HVAC and no touch-free bathrooms.
It's a motion by Novak.
I can.
I beat you to it, Don. But Don, you get to vote first.
Aye.
Kate, you get to vote on this one, right?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Josh? Vote aye as well, so that passes.
Just one other thought. Do you want us to continue to keep track of our eligible non-payroll operating expenses and the rest of the other stuff on the. show- eligible non-payroll operating expenses and the payroll operating expenses in case you want to use it later on?
Yeah, I think if we're going to make a decision on that later on, we probably have to.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to the agenda, reports, so administration. Mark, you got anything for administration?
No, I'll just do it under Parks. It'll be easier.
Okay. Public Works, I didn't see Cory on.
Yeah, Cory is not on the meeting tonight, and he's, didn't have anything.
Brady, please.
Evening, council and mayor. Just a couple of quick tidbits. We covered it earlier, but that big roundabout project opened up here. And almost as quickly as the headaches started when it closed, they were alleviated when it opened. Monitored both the shortcut routes today and saw marketable difference in the amount of traffic going on those roads. So hip, hip, parade for that. I thought I'd give you a couple of quick stats on the closure time for the police department. If it may please the council, just to kind of show and to publicize that the police department tried to do its best to step up our enforcement, step up our education, and try to make it as painless as possible for the people that lived on that shortcut. So at the time, June fifteenth to August twenty-fifth that it was closed, the chat, or excuse me, the Elko Market Police Department did over three hundred traffic stops specifically on the corridor shortcut. This doesn't include any other place, but along the shortcut corridor, we did over three hundred stops. However, only fourteen of those were for speeding. And I should say fourteen sites were for speeding. We did a lot more than that. Verbal warnings and education about the speed limit there. Of note, we kept getting complaints from the construction workers inside the construction zone about traffic continuing to come through. And we did over thirty traffic stops inside the construction zone during the roundabout building. And issued of those thirty-plus stops for the barricade violations, we issued over twenty-two citations, actual tickets for that. And those are more serious than speeding tickets, but we kind of, due to the construction workers constantly calling us, we took kind of some harder stances on that just because they're endangering the people who were working there. During the entire time, we did a hundred and sixty total traffic citations for a number of different offenses. And then we did two hundred plus warnings. And then we did a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty, it's hard to narrow it down, extra patrol, dedicated patrol right during the, during the shortcut routes and during the construction time. So this department did a ton of work to try to keep that as safe as possible. I'm happy to say there were no injury accidents along the corridor. And I think a big part of that was our stepped-up enforcement and then everybody else driving the speed limit and really being heads up during that time. We did about thirty to forty hours of dedicated enforcement where we brought in officers to judge those enforcement details. So overall, I know it was really for the people that lived along that shortcut route. And I use the term hell because I know that was bantered about on social media about all the big semis and everything. But in the end, no one hurt during that time from a traffic accident. Construction workers were there, and I think the entire community is way better off now that we have that roundabout. And it is going to improve the flow through that area and make everybody safer. So I'm open to questions on the roundabout.
Have there been any accidents yet?
Stole my thunder.
Sorry.
It's been open two days and no, I'm glad to report we've had no accidents. We did have, weekend before it opened, we did have some vandalism. Somebody thought it was a good idea to drive their truck, looked like a truck, all over the roundabout, damaging the center island, putting marks on the new cement, knocking over some posts, but nothing that delayed the opening of it. But even though we were there all the time, we didn't catch them. So as of right now, no accidents. I don't know about in ten minutes or tonight, but so far, these things typically do get accidents when they first come. But if you could say anything good about an accident, they are low-speed, rear-bender, side-swipe type accidents that don't lead to injuries, and that's what's most important. We can handle little bumper cars going on, but when it comes to the high-speed collisions that injure or kill people, we're just hoping we don't see any of those and this eliminates that.
I spoke with a resident today that was very, very happy to see that roundabout. They had someone close to them getting a pretty nasty car accident when it was pre-roundabout days. So I don't know. It's something that we've worked on for, I don't know, I want to say four years. I mean, it feels like it was forever that we tried to get that done. So I am just, it's really cool to see it done and it certainly appreciates, I certainly appreciate all the increased efforts from law enforcement on trying to keep it safe. And then the damage from over the weekend, as you mentioned, that kind of speaks almost to Gene's point from public comment. It's unfortunate, but I don't know what we do, so. Anyone else have questions for Brady?
I just wanted to say thanks and thanks to your officers for that extra work during that closure.
Well, I think it's so important that, you know, this is a big issue, but I'm happy to say I work in a community where this type of issue is the big issue. As we know, recent events, what's going on in the Twin Cities, I'm proud to say this is Elko New Market's big issue. And when you step back and look at what's going on around us, this is a good, big issue to have for our community. And I'm happy to say that, you know, we did not lose any life during this construction. No one was injured and we got, we weathered the storm, it's the best way to say it. And I think the Elko New Market citizens did a great job and ninety-nine percent of the people that were driving through there did a great job. So kudos to everybody that lives here as well.
Alright, thanks Brady.
The only other thing, mayor, is I just wanted to talk about the COVID issue with one of our staff. Again, we had to put him on the bench for two weeks. That did impact our coverage. If something like this happens, our officers, the other officers have really stepped up. And it goes through the next week here, and they're working a lot of hours to step up and provide coverage. And I just want to shout out to the staff of the police department that are really working a lot to cover for the people that are down due to COVID. So keep them in your thoughts and prayers, and we appreciate all your support, again, PD and everything. And we look forward to the next few weeks of smooth, free sailing here.
Appreciate it, Brady. No fire reports. Engineering, Rich. Rich, I feel like we haven't heard from you in forever.
Well, then let's fix that.
Alright.
I told Brady this morning that I was ceding my time to him in advance. However, since he took so little time, and something came up during his remarks that made me want to pass on a thought. And since you hadn't heard me from me for some while, I'll offer something. Traffic engineers no longer use the term accident. And I would encourage you all to use the term crash instead. And the reason is subtle but important. Accidents imply that the crashes are not preventable. Crashes are almost always preventable. And so by calling them crashes, we focus on the fact that they can be prevented and we're all doing our best to do that. That's it.
That makes sense.
From a law enforcement stance, he is a hundred percent correct. Apologize for using accident.
It's, it's our language. Everybody knows what we're talking about, but that's the reasoning anyway. I did have one little thing. Did you all know that ants never get sick?
Did not.
Yeah, they have little antibodies.
Oh, there you go. Should have seen that coming.
Next time, I'll cede my time.
I would appreciate that, thanks. Alright, community development.
I guess the only thing to pass on, I thought I would mention that they have started construction on two hundred and seventy-fifth street. As some of you will recall, the negotiation with New Market Township during the Boulder Heights annexation required the developer to pave two hundred and seventy-fifth street between County Road ninety-one and Oxford Lane. And they have started grading that. Developer has hired Ryan Construction or Ryan Contracting. So as soon as they finish the roundabout, they have moved down to that street. And yeah, we're really busy. We're getting a lot of development inquiries and these are good in community development.
Danny, any questions for community development? I can skip the questions for engineering, but I'm assuming no one had any because Rich has more jokes or something. Parks?
Yes, mayor, just three things. Only one really has anything to do with parks, but here we go. Four forty-eight Main Street demolition will start after Labor Day. We'll be removing the asbestos in that building and we should be done there in about three weeks by October first or so. We're still working on Recycling Day. DSI is going to give me a final okay or not okay on that one, depending on their people working for them. And if that's, if it's good, Saturday, October third, looks like the date from eight to eleven a.m. And we did the Farmers Market Survey. Haley's done a great job in helping me put that together. And that went out last week. We've had four hundred and forty-one responses so far. So it's obviously getting out there and it's pretty clear overwhelmingly people want it. And hopefully we'll get a few names and addresses there. I've had a number of calls from people that are interested in if we do one, can they have food truck there? And how about a classic car show there, those kinds of things. So making more contacts and that, that part is working, that part seems to be working out pretty well. Hopefully we'll get people that are interested in doing it. The last thing, and I guess that's four, not three, is the Parks Commission did approve the skate park Phase Two. So we'll be getting started on that as well too here in the next week or two. That's going to add on the rest of the equipment that we planned for with the original one. And we should have that done over the next couple of years here as well too. So that's all I have unless anybody has questions.
Awesome. Great, great job, Mark. I'm really excited on the Farmers Market and the inquiries that you're getting for different types of things. I think that's.
We had, I think Haley said we had somewhere around three hundred the first day it was out. So it's obviously touched a nerve, as they say. So I think it's great too.
Sure. Alright, any other questions for Mark before we move on? Okay. Oops. There you go. CCEC?
I'll take that one. And Linda, if she's still here, can correct me.
I am here, Mark.
Okay, good. Correct me if I'm wrong, as always. We're, we met here in August. We're going to try and do a parade of hope, so to speak, consisting of mainly public safety folks, the ambulance, police department and the fire department here on September tenth. So we're going to have a little parade through the neighborhoods and.
September twelfth, Mark. It's Saturday, September twelfth.
Why do I always get that wrong?
Not sure.
I was just testing you then to see if you could correct me. About one P.M. It'll last about an hour. We won't be throwing candy or anything like that. But, you know, we're hopeful people will come out on their lawns and watch them all go by. And we're, if you will, trying to have the Lakeville, or at least part of the Lakeville Band, Lakeville Iceball Band be part of it. But we will have a color guard. They'll be on, so to speak, floats themselves. And, you know, we're hopeful that people will turn out for it. Seems the least we could do as far as that goes to get that done. The other item was the Halloween party. Most cities are canceling their Halloween parties and trick-or-treat events and the rest of that. We're going to take a different tack. We're actually going to try and hold it. And we're going to just try and do a kind of a drive-through thing over to New Prague Elementary School. So there'll be more on that as well too. If nothing else, we will give each kid enough candy to have a sugar high. And really, that's what Halloween's all about, isn't it? So that's really the CCEC, and I think Linda and I can take questions. And Linda, correct me again. Add anything you'd like as well too.
Nope, you covered everything that I had, so.
Cool.
Any questions? Alright, thank you, guys.
Good bet.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Legislative, Legislative Policy Committee updates.
Earlier this month, so we have our next round, second week, first and second week of September, maybe, the last round.
Yeah. Alright, scale. Executive meeting is next week. General membership meeting is the week after that. We should be having representative from Greater MSP to discuss a bit about how, just that, well, just the economic impact of COVID in the Twin Cities, I guess, and the impact on unemployment. And I'm fascinated by it and looking forward to it, so. Service delivery, we don't have Tom here, unless, Mark, did you have anything to relay on?
No, sure.
Good. Unified Transit Plan Steering Committee, there was also Tom, right?
Nothing, nothing for me.
Okay. MVTA?
He met yesterday. Nothing to, I don't know. I think it's important to report that they are doing some sort of, they have a relationship with what they're called, what is called Helping Paws. They've been training service dogs to not be scared of the bus and walking them through. And that was kind of fun to hear about and see some pictures. That's all I got.
Alright. I thirty-five?
Meeting, second week of September.
Chamber of Commerce. You know, I always feel bad kind of putting you on the spot for the Chamber of Commerce. So you can always just tell me you don't want to report anything if you don't want to.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing to report. I was hoping somebody was going to be at this meeting, but I don't see them.
Golf tournament still in a couple of weeks.
Yes, yep.
How, do you have any idea how many people have signed up?
I do not know how many have signed up. I have not heard.
I'm just curious. A discussion by council. Anyone have anything? If not, if anyone wants to motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
It's a motion by Berg. It's a second by Novak. Kate, you want to vote first?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Vote aye as well. Use adjourn. Thank you, everybody.